Okay, you ready? Okay, let's call this meeting in order to please rise with the pledge of flag.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda? If there's no addition or amendments on that, then the motion to approve the agenda is submitted. Okay. Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of April 12th.
I'm moving to approve the minutes for the meeting of April 12th.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the April 12th meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stating motion carries. The next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $378,624.32. We took in receipts of $9,472.82. And we made disbursements in the amount of $20,403.05, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $367,694.09.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted. Moved and supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, why in Longham versus our...
Oh, I did, well, because my computer was down at the time that I did that and I redid it for the record and when my computer came back up the next day. Sorry about that.
Very legible.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stating motion carries.
Are you catching any money?
Ah, I don't know. We just have $5 in our fund for mousetraps, which might have been...
No, 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 what happened?
That's all.
I know, me too.
No, one of our presidents bought some from us.
Well, when we discontinued Terminex, we bought these traps. They're like sticky traps. They're for spiders.
They might stay in that thing.
And if you bought a bunch of them, they were, is that gonna sleep cheap? So we bought a bunch of them, but we said they're not gonna last 50 years in a box, so if anybody wants them, we'll sell them for our cost, which is about 50 cents each.
And so that's how we acquired the fortune in mousetraps.
That's it.
There you go.
Okay, moving on. Number one, correspondence. Item A, council on aging. Everybody in their packet has a copy of the letter sent to us by the council on aging. They're a great organization that do a lot of work. We cannot support them with our Park and Rex money, and in the past, we have not contributed to general fund money. But we certainly support in the spirit, and we do, they do get millage money from the population in the county.
That's right.
So, what's the, if they get millage money, why are they, is it just always a shortfall? Or... I believe so.
What is a program unit?
A program...
They report that there were 200, almost 200, 2,500.
Well, a meal would be a program unit, or if they come into a class, or if they counsel or, it's contact.
A contact.
Contact, yeah, that'd be a good word for contact, I would think.
Okay, so the other county millages, parks and wrecks, do they, on some of their parks, do they get local funding from like the townships or cities?
Most of them don't.
Okay.
I know in Columbus, where the new park, the township rebuilt that one barn. Right. But they didn't do anything as far as where the lodge and stuff is.
I'm just surprised this council on aging, that when they pass for their millage, it's not self-sustaining, or...
Well, I think they get a lot of donations from a lot of places, too. Millage is only supplemental.
Yeah.
I don't know what other income they get from any state.
I know that I pay for a class when I wanna go, you know, at the Washington Life Center in Marine City, you wanna take a zumba class or a yoga class or something, and it's a drop-in class, you know, three bucks, which is a heck of a lot better than, you know, joining a club around here and paying through the nose for it. Yeah, so it's nice, but they, they come in the door and they, they pay as they go, but it really probably doesn't cover the cost of a, an instructor or something, you know. It helps.
All right, let's cheers. Okay, I do not, item B, board commissioner meeting. As they do every year, they send a letter saying if you're interested in hosting one of their meetings to let them know. We did one several years ago, and due to the fact that we may have construction in progress at that time, I think we should pass.
I think so, too.
Okay, moving on. Number two, old business, budget adjustments. Last month, we made several budget adjustments to kind of finish out the fiscal year, and myself included overlooked the one for the heating inspector. You can see on the top that that's what we approved.
Right.
But we had the wrong numbers on it. It should've been 6,000 instead of 20,000. And on the bottom, which was where we took the money from, what we approved last month, was the balance in the balance end, but that's not a budget adjustment. Budget adjustment is how much did you budget, what are the amendments, and what's the amended budget? So those two items indicated in yellow, we should address that tonight with a motion to approve those changes.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the changes in the account for the heating inspector, 101, 371, 960, from 6,000 to the amended amount of $6,200.
Okay, would it be bottom one, two, please?
And then, yes, oh, the attorney, oh, I'm looking for the title, the attorney's fees, which is account 101, 101, 826, from the original 14,364, amended to show 13,044.91 as the revised budget.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported to make the two budget adjustments. Is there any discussion?
Is this Paul Leonard GSB, or what do they call that?
Yeah. I just was getting the wrong...
Okay. Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll, call a vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Number three, new business, item A. As outlined in the update a little bit, the state tax commission is auditing St. Clark County this year, and one of their notes to our assessor was that if you're not gonna have a full five-day type week, you need a resolution from the board stating that you're gonna have less hours than that. So they drafted up this resolution for your consideration and approval. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve both, to adopt. To adopt resolution 201605.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to adopt resolution 201605, stating that our office hours are Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 3:30. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll roll, call a vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Okay, moving on. Item B. I was contacted by Mark Broschu, the head of County Park and Rex, that he had been contacted by a property owner, Casco, inquiring whether they had any interest in purchasing his property, that he had listed it for sale, and he had not sold it, and he would like to do something with it. So Mr. Broschu wanted to know if the township would be interested, since we currently do not have an active park, and the access to the river is a really top priority with everybody right now. And be sure that there's all kinds of grant money available. It does take a couple of years to get, and even the county might be able to help us out, so. So I put it on the agenda, showed it to you on a map where it is. It's over by here, and just to get a direction from the board, if you like me, and to explore this, because I'm not gonna kind of tag the property owner if the board doesn't want to go that way.
First of all, how much is the property value? Do we know that?
Well, I didn't get an appraisal from our assessor yet. The man had it listed at $300,000, but in his email to the county, he said that he knows it's not worth that much. And so, that, you know, if you explore the possibilities, then you get into the dollar moment.
Is this land, I mean, if we took possession of it, would we expect it to do something right away, or can we hold it in strategic reserve?
Well, you're not, unless you're taking money from some other source, there's no timeline out with anything. But I haven't explored all the options. I asked the county if we did not want it, if they would want it, and he said, well, in order to acquire property, they have to go through a, they have a committee that's in charge of acquisition recommendations. And since he just got contacted, they have not, they have nothing in front of their committee. So he didn't really say absolutely no or absolutely yes, but as you notice from reading the paper, they've been buying lots of property, high-priced property, so I don't know if this would be a high priority for them. I can see a lot of benefits.
About 400, 500 feet of river footage?
You know, I didn't print out the tax card to give you, but it's so curvy.
Yeah, it looks like it's considerable, actually.
But like I say, I can see several advantages.
Yeah, I, I mean, the worst thing, let's just say we bought it to hold it, say, hey, in the future, when we, the worst thing, we wouldn't be getting tax revenue from it.
Well, you're not getting much now.
Probably not getting much now, a vacant land, and it's in a, well, it's in a what?
Floodlight.
It's in a floodlight.
I mean, it's in a great location for traffic-wise to get, so...
Yeah, and it's right next to the gas station, too.
We should give you the, go ahead to explore.
Just to explore.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing.
We have resources.
If anybody's dying to come in on it, I did ask Colleen if she would wanna get in on it, so that there's two people. She said if Joe or Dan were dying, she wouldn't mind, but otherwise, she would be glad to do it.
Well, I just thought, you're more of an outside person than I am, and I thought maybe you'd be interested in it. What, why I'm interested in it is because just lately, I have seen completed on the Bell River, if you, if you, if you, go, go take a look. If you go down Meisner Road, pass over King Road, go a little bit, and on your right-hand side is the East China Performing Arts Center and all of that. Immediately after you pass that building is the Bell River Road. Take it into Marine City, go up to your right, and they had just completed a beautiful, what do you call, a kayak launch, you know, launch, and before, I think even before it was completed, people were lining up to use it.
Right.
And I told Bill, that's a, that's a much larger, and it seems to me a more free-flowing body of water right now, but maybe if, if the only thing we, we use our money for is to secure this and maybe do some cleanup river work, or whatever that creek work, whatever that is, I think, or, or just a fishing post, some, you know...
Yeah.
Bents and, and whatever else down there.
There's a big thing now, you know, they had linear trails, rail trails and other stuff like that. Now, now it's water trails.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just thinking all these little kayak places, you know, join in. So I think it's worth exploring, don't you?
Yeah. Is that still Simon's Farm part of it, or...
Part of it.
Part of it, yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Item C, ditch engineering. We mentioned a little bit last month, that we do have matching money available for ditching this year, and there's a couple of smaller jobs that could be done, but the road that gets the most traffic, even though the ditch isn't horrific, is an outer road. So I got with the foreman, county foreman, and we looked at it, and he said, you know, that he's all in favor of doing it naturally.
Okay.
But he said because of all, there's so many utilities, and there is 21 culverts in that mile on the east side of the road.
Which mile are we talking about?
From...
Buddy got to St. Clair.
That's a bad, bad road. That, you know, the way to go about it, we, because of all the utilities, crossing the road and everything, would have it engineered. Now, the county's policy is, you know, they'll engineer it, and if you do some work, they don't charge you for the engineering. If you never do anything, then this is the thing you're looking at here, which is...
Let's do something.
So while they were doing it, he had to write it up for both sides of the road, even though they have no intention of doing the west side, other than maybe cutting some berm off. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, and they seem to be of the impression that they could engineer it and do some work this year.
Are the neighbors, do they get water in your yard? I mean, I don't...
It's more the, the road.
It's the road, 'cause then, all the neighbors are far back from the road.
Right.
I don't think, I mean, there are some properties there that, you know, they flood 200 feet up into the yard, but their houses are so far back, nobody, you know, that's, that's not bothersome, but the road is far.
By the way, that road ditch really needs that work.
Well, one place is deep, one place is shallow, but what happens is accumulates all the water on the side of the road, then you get a mud puddle, then you get big giant holes. Now, you could cut the berm and make it a lot better, but still, you'd end up with not a very good thing. So, so that's why it's here, we need approval of this. Move ahead.
So move, support. They're gonna do, they're gonna engineer the east side of the ditch.
Well, this is for both sides. Oh, either there, or both sides. But we don't have to do both. And we don't have to, even though our matching money has a total of $50,000, we don't even have, we don't have to spend all that to negate this.
As long as we just...
No neighbors, go, go put new culverts in.
Well, we didn't get to that point. Usually what happens is, is you include the cost of the culverts. Now, the one we did last year, I wrote a letter to all the people and said, we would like you to contribute just the cost of the culvert, which is a deal.
Yes.
And they all did.
Okay, that's good.
But if you set it to 21, would you get two back, or three back, or five, or 10? I don't know.
Maybe all 21?
Well, maybe, but good luck with that one.
They say it's my gift to my community.
Yeah.
Own culvert.
Yeah, that goes without saying.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yeah.
It's moved and supported to approve the agreement for the Melvin Road engineering. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll roll, call a vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item B, building project. I say this every month. I talked to Roland Monday, and he's hopeful they'll have at least one, if not two, prices in this week. We already have one, and then we can start moving ahead. Now, when we get the two or three prices, and that's the main price, to build the thing, I really, really don't wanna do that at a special meeting. I don't think that's a good policy. I think you do it at a regular meeting.
Okay.
And so that would be the June meeting. And I'm still, I'm still fine, trying to fine-tune the other, like the phones and computers. The guy's coming up Monday for the alarm system.
May I ask you why you wouldn't want to do that at a special meeting?
Right.
It just looks like you're doing it out of sync for a special reason.
There's also extra cost for the township.
A little cost, but...
But we're behind now, right? We gotta, we're way behind. We're really behind.
Well, you're gonna, and, but you're working out of the assumption that if you sped it up by two weeks, that these people could start two weeks earlier. And I don't know if that's the case, because when he gets the prices, then the question is, starting, when do you think you could start, and how long will it take?
If we're delayed, and that causes problems for election, have we thought of a contingency, like at the school on county line, or...
There's no way I could do it, because I have to contact all the election people. I can't move it. I've gotta keep it here.
And it could very well affect one of the two elections. It shouldn't affect both. And worst case is that primarily the offices are gonna be shut that day, because they'll be voting in here where the computers are. I believe there's enough room in here to hold a full election, even with six computers against the wall.
Yeah, that's not possible.
Even that crazy presidential election.
Well, we're hoping by November, we will be done.
Right.
Right?
Yep, that's what I said.
And you can set some provisions about getting things ready for that particular time in the contract, I would think.
I'm sure. Or someone will be around to help speed them on.
If they don't get done by that time, it's a question.
Well, I talked to Roland about that, because I think when you get into penalties, one or two things happen. Either, either they include a bonus clause for getting it early, or they jack the price up to cover them in case they don't get done in time. So I don't believe in it for the size project we have. If it was a multi-million dollar thing, but, so, but you can certainly ask that of Roland, but that he'd agree with me.
So we'll just keep, you know, like phoning him every day and saying, are you coming? Are you coming? Are you coming?
We'll have them on speed dial.
The trouble is that they're all very, very busy also, so...
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully next month, there'll be much more activity. Okay, moving on. Item E, computer software server upgrades. It's an already saga of the computer. We had one that went down, so we wanna upgrade the software on four computers at, and you can see the amounts over there, $215.88 each. Then the other page is an estimate for a new server. If you're someone inclined to make a motion to approve it, I would prefer you said not to exceed that amount, because I think I'm gonna get a discount on the estimate. So, now that is, the IT guy that comes out says, even though that's a lot of money, it's $2,798, that that is a good deal.
It's just, we, it's the cost of doing business. We, we're dead in the water in the tax department and in the assessing department. We're down more than we're up lately.
Well, we've been having a lot of problems, and primarily with BSNA, and none of the other townships are having that problem. So there's something here. And we've pretty much excluded everything but the server, and the server is pretty old. It has limited memory, so I guess it goes with the territory.
Why are the, why are the upgrades so expensive?
And that, I priced it, it isn't really expensive, because that's the going rate.
Well...
They have me check.
She checked, and you can get some for half that, but when you went to the make a model that we got, it was within a dollar on this.
Right.
Right.
So...
It just is...
We did those.
It's just...
You're basic, no, that's...
Yeah, we...
It just seemed, you know...
It seems expensive.
Well, I just got Windows 10 for nothing, but this, I know this is...
This is the software, though.
Yeah, this is the software. This is the whole package.
Right.
Well, this is word, it's not, we already have Windows 10 that's on the machines, I'll take it.
We're using 07. I don't know what she...
I'm...
Yeah, so, we need her.
Come to the future.
Yes.
All I know is when I turn it on, Fred Flintstone goes, "Sunny cross."
Bam, just beat it up. All right, what do you want in the motion?
Well, moving to the motion to approve...
Each separately.
Yeah, the invoice for 94351, and the estimate for an amount not to exceed 2,798.
I make a motion to approve the amount for Microsoft Office and for the battery backup of $943.51. Also, to approve for our new server not to exceed 2798.
So move, support it.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? We'll roll, call a vote, please.
Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item of the bills.
Any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll make a motion the bills be paid.
Support party?
Moved and supported, pay the bills. Any discussion? We'll roll, call a vote, please.
Hold it. That's a little soldier. Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is comments.
Just to remind everybody about the emergency management breakfast come on the week from Friday, 20th?
What is it? The week from Friday, what date is that?
That would be the 20th.
20th?
My birthday.
It's your birthday?
We'll get you a free breakfast.
Didn't wait to ride with Wayne together.
Need 20.
Reserve.
Hey, you gotta have your reservations in...
Seven, I think it's at 7:30.
I don't know, we gave you guys the form.
What, what time is it at?
Well, breakfast is...
7:30? That's what I said.
Plan Commission, we're not having nothing on the agenda, but we're just gonna kick around some ideas on some, maybe some amendment changes.
Do some of our ordinances?
Yeah, yeah, like we talked about maybe doing something down in your area with some of the setbacks and stuff like that.
Oh, really?
People that get, go get a bunch of variances if they wanna do something down there.
Okay.
Well, there's stuff like that, some new setting stuff, so give us some time, do some time without having something on the agenda. And one other thing is, I'm really kind of pleased that everyone's in agreement about that property along the river, about exploring.
It's kinda exciting.
Yeah, it is.
A lot of riverfront.
Well, like I said, it has several advantages that the other property we have.
Doesn't.
Hearing none.
Would we think of selling that other property?
That would be a very good thing to think about, some of it anyway.
I would, I mean, if we could this property, it'd be awesome. I'd even be using it.
Now, you get a letter from Comcast yesterday.
Okay.
And our franchise agreement runs out in 2019. In 2006, they passed a new law that pretty much gutted the franchise agreement, but because they might change the law, they wanna go through, they're applying to start a formal process of renewing the franchise. So NEMC, which is our group in Comcast, is gonna be discussing that later this month. We'll see. The trouble is, there's a lot of things about Comcast I'd like to leverage, but you have no leverage, because the federal law takes away all your leverage, plus they give us a lot of money a year. So we'll see.
Well, at least talk to them about expanding into the entire township.
I know, but you can't. The old, the original franchise had language that I found, and they killed that, and now, yeah, they'll go anyplace you want, but they charge the property owners such a...
Yeah, but that, yeah, that's, that's not right.
Extraordinary amount of money. Extraordinary amount of money.
And I, I thought it was going to be mandated by the federal government to get service to rural areas all over the country, internet service.
Because, say, if Suncle, you want the gas, you gotta pay the big bucks, you know, the match.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Well, you know what, I'm not paying for them to come down my road, they can just come down my road, because the government wants all rural areas covered.
Well, the government's doing it with the towers. That's how the government's doing it.
Well, you know what, I got 5 acres, they can put up a tower in my woods.
Because they've gone through.
Give me $10,000.
They've gone through, put all those towers up, and the government take 100% of the installation for that nationwide.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens with that, I don't know, it looks like a no-win situation, but they do give us quite a bit of money for our percentage of the franchise, bill every month, so we'll see.
Is there a way to get other companies in here?
Well, that's the main problem, there's no competition.
There's no competition.
If they, if they didn't have the franchise, they still had the business.
Yeah.
Because there's nobody else who's gonna come in.
They'll not have good satellite, but you won't get.
Well, you get it now, though, that's not competition, competition's warriors on the pole.
Like Wow.
And we don't, you know, well, AT&amp;T, there's a bunch of them, but not enough people here to justify the cost. So we'll keep you updated. Anything else under citizen comments?
Did you agree to think about finding and, you know, the lawsuits about, about, you could, you could take care of a lot, a lot of lawsuits, but if.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, about the finding, you know, just to court, like 85% is civil cases.
Well, standing, if you don't have any legal standing, you can't file a suit.
Right.
And we've done that in the past, when, but it costs us the money, look at the money it costs us, when Mr. Paulie sued us.
Yeah.
Over that cell tower, he was beyond 300 feet, he had no legal standing, and it still costs us almost $40,000 for the judge to tell him those.
On the civil side, they don't have a court officer, like a district attorney on the criminal side, that people come, please bring them cases, and say, I don't have enough here to, you know, try it. There's not really anything like that on the civil side, so we're caught in cases like that, you know, so.
It costs you a lot of money just to get it thrown over.
Yeah.
There should be an officer of the court that does that, or, but I don't think a lot of lawyers would like that, that's my business.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moving supportive to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
We stay in adjourn.